Hello, everybody. Welcome to Paris. I think it's my favorite time of the year when the Paris come. Yay! Pursuant to the open public meetings at Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, this meeting notice was sent to the Asbury Park Press on July 7, 2025, and is duly advertised in the Asbury Park Press issue of July 7, 2025. All members of clerks of the townships, the boroughs, and the regional districts duly have the notice and requirements for this posting to be met on July 2, 2025. Please join me and Antonio Lombardi with a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I just have everyone remain standing for a moment of silence? Today, 24 years ago, our nation was under attack by evil people in New York, and I'd just like a moment of silence for all people who lost their lives. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for that, Antonio. I was going to have some comments, too. We honor the lives of the Boston brave responders. 24 years later, people are still suffering and dying from certain cancers from 9/11. I think the number was 400 since 24 years ago. So, thank you for the moment of silence. I will never forget the day I was working in Manalapan High School as a CICA. And that morning, I ran the boardwalk in Belmar, beautiful morning. And when I went to work, I never realized how many people from Manalapan were affected and worked in the city. So, yeah, I'll never forget that day. So, thank you for reminding us, and we had planned to say a little something. So, crazy day in Iowa, but always.
Today, each of our... Antonio, thank you very much for leading us in that moment of silence. Today, each of our high schools facilitated programming educational programs and ceremonies at each of our schools with a moment of silence that's led by the building administration in each of our schools. Today, along with Dr. Howell, Mr. Dilling, Dr. Bleakley, and Dr. Ambra... Dr. Ambra Chee, we went over to Marlborough Township, where each year they have a commemorative ceremony because there were 14 members of the Marlborough community that passed at 9/11. So, we spent each morning, and today, the sun was shining just as bright as it was, you know, on the day of the tragedy. So, Antonio, thank you for leading us in that. And, you know, our thoughts and prayers are with the victims, the families, that to this day, you know, we need lives suffering from what transpired in our country.
Thank you. Mrs. Scannell, would you take us to the board agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. In addition to the items, we're noting that the agenda was pre-printed prior to meeting tonight. The board also announced and discussed exception number three, the student discipline report. For exception number seven, the board discussed the matters under docket number 1508-7-25 and 1508-9-25. The board also discussed English down property issues.
Thank you. Now, I have a motion to approve the minutes of the August 27 student motion meeting.
Second.
Ms. Capiello.
Any discussion, board? No, I'm not hearing any discussion. Go, Paul.
Mr. Astoloff.
Yes.
Ms. Bruno.
Ms. Capiello.
Yes.
Ms. Butcher-Farkas.
Yes.
Ms. Higley.
Ms. Lavin.
Yes.
Ms. McColl.
Yes.
Mr. Messinger.
Yes.
Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Thank you.
Just a note, the communications are on file in the board secretary's office. Dr. Hazel, you ready for your superintendent report?
Okay. Good evening. All of our schools were off to a terrific start this school year. I really feel like our staff, but most importantly, our students came back kind of energized to start the school year. A lot of positivity in all of our schools, right? The fall sports season has started. Students are just beginning to get involved in the activities at the school. So, we are very, very excited for what this school year is going to bring for all of our students. Each of our schools, and I know we mentioned this through the summer, have outlined expectations for our students. Once again, reiterating our cell phone policy. And this year, we are really working with students because that cell phone cannot be out at any time during instructional time, which means they can't be carrying the phone if they happen to leave the classroom to go to the bathroom or to go to the guidance office, main office, any reason as they're leaving that classroom during those 67 minutes, no phones. And in speaking with students over these past, you know, last school year and even this school year, students are receiving it well. And in their classroom, they feel, you know, I feel much more engaged and connected in my classroom when I know that that distraction is not near it. So, I'm really proud of our students. I want to, you know, thank all of our teachers for, you know, supporting that effort in meeting with our executive student cabinet. Dr. Howell and myself this week met with our representatives, and it was great to hear that that message was in every single one of their classrooms and conveyed to them. So, from the administration in their class meetings, but also they were hearing this in their classrooms as well. The other piece that is a general focus for this school year is reminding students that we want them to maintain excellent attendance. We want our students here in school every single day. We want them engaged, we want them involved, we want them connected, of course, to their school community. But most importantly, that they are connected in their classrooms and progressing through the curriculum and are learning each day. So, those are the two big focus areas administratively and working with our teachers and families and students. So, again, with that aside, because we do need to set expectations, still an energy that was so positive and alive coming into this school year. So, I'm really looking forward to the 25, 26 school year and all that at France. This evening is a special evening, and we recognize our support staff members, our paraprofessionals that work in our schools. And the paraprofessionals work with our special education population in all of our programs, all of our fabulous programs in the district, working with students in the classroom, outside of the classroom, in extracurricular activities, in after-school recreation programs, and our extended school year program. And we have six recipients this school year. Our department here at the central office, our director is here, Dr. Howland, in our buildings, we have special education supervisors and our full child study teams, all supporting the educational and extracurricular programs for our students. But this evening is about our support staff members, our paraprofessionals, who are intricately connected to our students, to our programs, and our parents, and our community. So, we have six recipients this evening. I'm going to start with Coltsenack High School. And Dawn Fox, where's Dawn Fox? Mrs. Fox has been a paraprofessional with the Freehold Regional High School District for six years. She consistently demonstrates professionalism, dedication, and a strong commitment to meeting the academic, behavioral, and emotional needs of her students, ensuring all accommodations and safety protocols are followed. Ms. Fox takes the initiative beyond her primary assignment, often stepping in to support other classrooms and colleagues when needed. Her ability to build trust with her students, she has a calm and supportive presence that helps students stay focused and feel secure. Her flexibility, teamwork, and positive energy continue to make a meaningful impact on our school community. Congratulations, Mrs. Fox. Michael Ngu from Freehold High School. I've been a paraprofessional with the Freehold Regional High School District for 15 years, assisting students in an array of programs, ranging from mainstream electives, content courses, and our self-contained programs. Consistently going above and beyond in the role, demonstrating an unwavering dedication, compassion, and professional way every day. His ability to connect with students, support teachers, fosters a positive learning environment that sets him apart. He has served as a job coach in the workplace training program, helping students practice their vocational skills and becoming workforce-ready. He approaches every challenge with patience and creativity, ensuring that each student feels seen, supported, and capable of success. Congratulations.
He's also married to Elise Mrs. Arrow, who was my student at Manalapan High School. Excellent soccer player, and she's a physical education teacher at Freehold High School.
Many, many years ago. Our third recipient from Freehold Township High School, Amberie Lloyd. Ms. Lloyd is a valued member of the Freehold Township High School community and has been with the school for six years. Her flexibility and willingness to adapt to any situation makes her an asset to both staff and students. She consistently goes above and beyond to support her team, always approaching her work with kindness, patience, and professionalism. Her ability to connect with students helps create a nurturing environment where students feel empowered to grow and become more dependent each day. Whether she is collaborating with colleagues or guiding a student through a challenge, Ms. Lloyd exemplifies what it means to be dedicated, compassionate, and professional. Congratulations. Jennifer LaSalle, Howell High School. Ms. LaSalle has been an invaluable member of the Howell High School community for three years. She has a natural gift for working in the autistic program. Ms. LaSalle knows how to reach the students in each situation to quickly assess what needs to be done. She has a calm, yet firm demeanor, which helps the students become their very best self. Not only is she wonderful with each student, but she's also a wonderful colleague. She's kind, considerate, and supportive. Ms. LaSalle is reliable, can always be counted on, no matter what the situation. We are grateful at Howell High School every single day to work with her. Congratulations. Manalapan High School, our recipient Jonathan Harrison. Mr. Harrison has been a valuable member of the Freehold Regional High School District for 18 years. His exceptional dedication, compassion, and professionalism have significantly enriched our educational community. Mr. Harrison's abilities include building strong collegial relationships with students and all stakeholders, consistently demonstrating professionalism in his interactions, and fostering an atmosphere of mutual respect and collaboration. He has been a consistent presence, and his dependability has made him a cornerstone of the team at Manalapan High School. Congratulations, Jennifer LaSalle. Harris is not here? Okay. We'll make sure he gets his awards. From Marlborough High School, Karen Blazer. Mrs. Blazer has been a paraprofessional with the Freehold Regional High School District for one year. Ms. Blazer has consistently demonstrated dedication, adaptability, and a deep commitment to student success. She approaches every student with compassion, patience, and an open heart, regardless of the needs or the challenges that are faced. What truly sets her apart is her mindset. No matter the situation, she brings a positive attitude that lifts up everyone around her, students and colleagues alike. Her willingness to adapt, collaborate, and face each day with optimism has a lasting, will have a lasting impact on our school community. It is a true pleasure to recognize and celebrate you as an exceptional member of our school community. Congratulations. Do you want to get a picture? All right.
Congratulations. We do have one board report tonight. Mrs. Capiello, we'll do policies?
Thank you. So, Policy Committee that... I don't know where that last week. And these policies are on for the first place on today's agenda. I did want to just thank Mr. Dilling.
Can we just take one moment? I think a few folks may be leaving, which is okay. So, if anyone is leaving, we'll just take a moment before Mrs. Capiello finishes her report.
Okay. So, I wanted to thank Mr. Dilling for stepping into the role of helping us navigate this policy. And as always, I want to send a thank you out to the community members who have been a part of this policy committee way before I have for many years. It's one of the only committees, I think, of the board where there are active participating, always there, community members. These folks have long since graduated out their students and still take the time to come, and if they can't, to at least review the policies and give us their input. So, I'm very thankful that they come. Okay. So, Policy 10173, Duties of the Public School Accountant, was revised to include the Administrative Code sections that outline the responsibilities and requirements of the accountant and the board. Mind you, the majority of these policies, most of them are just minor changes, language changes, they're mandated policies, they're things that are already in place. But, you know, as we move forward year to year, things are changed, and we try to keep on top of it and keep things up to date. Policy 0174, Legal Services, has been revised to incorporate language revisions that require each Board of Education to establish by policy a strategy to minimize the cost of professional services, including legal fees. Sorry, my friend. And this has always been in place, something that this district has always practiced. You know, with no willy-nilly, let's call the attorney. There's a process in place that everybody follows so that my friend down there doesn't get too much. Policy 0177, Professional Services, has been revised to incorporate language revisions that were made in the updated Administrative Code regarding the awarding of contracts for professional services. Policy and Regulation 1570, Internal Controls, has been revised to include language revisions from the Administrative Code sections. This addresses the requirements for school districts to establish specific policies and procedures on internal controls designed to provide management with assurance that the school district's goals and objectives meet the requirements of the Administrative Code. Policy 1620, Administrative Employment Contracts, has been revised to include language revisions in recently adopted Administrative Code. This addresses the requirements of the Executive County Superintendent's review and approval of all employment contracts for superintendents, assistant superintendents, and school business administrators. Policy 6111, Special Education Medicaid Initiative, it's a semi-program, has been revised to include language revisions. This addresses every school district's requirement to take appropriate steps to maximize participation in the Special Education Medicaid Initiative program, which is the semi-program. Policy 6220, Budget Preparation, was revised to include language revisions regarding budget preparation. Policy 0141.3, Board Member Number and Term for Regional School Districts, addresses the rules regarding the number of board members and terms that they may serve on a regional school district board. Policy 0143, Board Member Election and Appointment, has been revised to better align with New Jersey statutes and addresses the rules for filling a vacancy on school district boards. Policy 1636.01, Notification of Promotion, New Job, and Transfer Opportunities, requires boards of education to make reasonable efforts to announce, post, or otherwise make known opportunities for promotion that are advertised internally within the district or externally on internet-based advertisements, postings, printed flyers, or other similar advertisements to all current employees in the affected departments of the employer's business prior to making a promotion decision. In other words, that if there's an opening, a position, it's always posted, okay? So, it's always available for everyone to see internally, as well as if it's being posted externally. The opportunity is always there for people to see what opportunities are there for advancement. Policy 1648.15, Record Keeping for Healthcare Settings in School Buildings, COVID-19, this is my favorite, is being abolished after the state of New Jersey has no longer enforced COVID-19 record keeping and reporting requirements under 29 CFR 1910.502. Thank you very much. We can now use that time for more things. Policy 2422, Statutory Curricular Requirements, has been revised to include the statutory curricular requirement which mandates instruction on the history and contributions of Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders in an appropriate place in the curriculum. And, you know, we do this, okay? Whether it's in our social studies program or our English programs. All of these things are really not new for us. They're things that we're already doing. It's just, like I said, most of this is just language changes. Policy 5339.01, Student Sun Protection. I find this one interesting, too. Requires that the school district develop and adopt a policy concerning a student's use of sunscreen and sun-protective clothing while outdoors at school and school-sponsored functions. You know, and at high school level, if the kids are outside and they have sunscreen and they're going to apply it, I don't think it's an issue. If you're, you know, in the lower grades and you're carrying around sunscreen, well, maybe it is a problem. But, you know, we want our kids to be protected, and we're not going to interfere in their putting on their sunscreen. Policy and Regulation 6470.01, Electronic Funds Transfer and Paying Certification, permits the use of standard electronic fund transfers, technologies for payment. And we have this in place. We have, the parent has the ability to use electronic transfers. We have Chromebook monies that need to be transferred or lunch monies that need to be transferred. So, it's already in place to make it a bit easier for parents. Policy 2415, Title I Parent and Family Engagement, requires schools that receive Title I funding to provide targeted parent and family engagement activities. Thank you for your...
Thank you. Good talking to you.
Mr. President, I have a question if I could.
Sure.
What's the maximum amount of terms a board member can serve?
May I answer that, Mr. President?
Yes, you may.
The term is just on the length of term, not the number of terms you serve, Mr. Astoloff.
Well, that's a little...
Because I would be going...
At least, I understand.
I don't understand.
There are no terms. You can't escape. No, just kidding. The, no, the terms that Mrs. Capiello was referencing in the policy had three-year terms. The board member runs for three-year terms. It's just, there was cleanup language in the policy relating to that. Remember, here at the regional, we have towns that are grouped together as we rotate through, and also the other revision to deal with the process to fill a vacancy should one be created.
So, in other words, I can't run for four terms?
You can run for...
Many...
You can run for as many as you like.
Extended time.
No. You have to be elected. You have to be elected.
Okay. Tell Donald Trump.
Okay. We're good? All right. Go ahead and move along. Anybody for public participation today? I didn't get a sheet. Good? Okay. We're going to take H1 through K3 tonight.
Mr. President? Mr. Bruno, just one second. Before, we just need to ask any changes to the agenda.
Oh, yes. Because I know there are some. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Ms. Bruno. So, in the back, there is a coded piece of paper with some changes. So, G5, we have some approval of some of the various potential proctors. G6, approval of honoraria. G16, approval of additional substitute and home instruction personnel. We have a new resolution that is not on this piece of paper or return to meetings to record really quickly. For H6, there will be numbered H6, the resolved Freehold Regional High School District Court of Education approved a contract with a law firm, McCurdy, Ryskin, Olson, and Delapel, to serve as special counsel as recommended by the superintendent. And then finally, one removal on K1. Mr. Astoloff is not going to be attending the school board workshop this October, so we are removing him from the agenda. And that concludes the changes for the agenda tonight.
Thank you. We're going to take G1 through K3.
Offer second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion. Go, Paul.
Mr. Astoloff?
Yes, all.
Ms. Capiello?
Yes, on everything except on K1. I abstain from, Dr. Hazel.
Thank you. Ms. Butcher-Farkas?
Yes, on all except for K1. I abstain for myself, which I'm Butcher-Farkas.
Thank you. Ms. Lavin?
Yes.
Ms. McColl?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes. I abstain on K1. Atlantic City trip?
As to yourself.
Pass to myself.
Almost with the pass.
We're now going to see if any board members have old business to discuss. Not hearing any old business. How about new business? I just want to thank the staff, everybody in the district, for making it a really great opening. I was kidding before we closed session, but I shouldn't say it because I...
I'll say it.
I heard the lawyer say it. No, it's been a great week. I haven't gotten any complaints about transportation or teachers or kids being left in school to deserve... I usually get emails. So, thank you, staff, for that. I think so. All right.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Any other business?
Mr. Bruno, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to sign.
I don't think we broke the record, I guess. May I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Yes.
May I have a second?
We have, sir. Ms. McColl, Ms. Capello.
I'd like to at least read it. I know. Just in case somebody's watching.
Ms. McColl would be very upset if she didn't make that motion.
Right, Dr. Howell? I should, right? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting's adjourned.